Board to order, June 7th, 2017, 7:00 P.M. With us this evening if we could introduce ourselves, please.
Mike Howie.
Barbara Higginbart.
John Fink, Chair.
Jim Barkhouse.
Roger Lucide.
John DeLeo.
This is, I understand, Barbara's last meeting. Her term is up and she is not chosen to continue with us. I did ask her what she's going to do with the extra time that she has. Once and all.
No, I didn't know that. Is it true?
Surprise.
Uh-oh.
See the look on your face.
Yeah, tough thing.
I'll tell you. Wait there. Oh, that's cool.
Surprise, surprise. Do you need a few minutes to recover?
No, it's okay.
First item of business is adopt the minutes from the April 5th meeting. Is there a motion to accept the minutes?
I make a motion that we accept the minutes from April 5th, 2017.
Is there a second?
Second thought.
Thank you. Any discussion, any corrections, additions? Hearing none, all in favor, please. Thank you. Next item, this final plan for a major subdivision entitled Bridge Twin Estates Phase Two for Bridge Twin LLC. The proposal is to extend Bridge Twin Road which is located off the Mariahville Road, Route 180, to create a 14 lot residential land subdivision located on 27 acre parcel, tax map 68 Lot 3 and 67 Lot 3 in the rural zone. Someone representing the applicant, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to be cused myself.
Okay. Mr. DeLeo, you get to vote. Your first time here.
I've read the information that Michelle has given me. Ready to vote?
We used to have a, there was a tradition at one point where the most recent member, the junior ultimate, would always wind up with some terrible assignment. But that sort of fell by the wayside. You're lucky. Okay, go ahead, please.
Steve Salisbury for the applicant. We've supplied you with a revised plan showing the restrictions we had to put on the buffers for stormwater and the conditions we agreed with the city staff for conditions of approval. We have the details worked out on the paving, final paving of the first phase. That will be done when it stops raining.
It'll stop raining.
It's a lane construction sequence.
Michelle, a question on the technical review team. There's some items there that were lined out. Is that, that implicated that they were done?
Excuse, yeah, yeah. So, we, as Steve mentioned, everything's taken care of. We are very happy. There's a note in the plan that was added pertaining to the paving. And both the applicant and the city is very comfortable with the note. Basically, the note pertains to, we're going to be paving it. If we don't pave it until a certain date, then they can go and start their second phase. But it's really at this point, it's just a technicality. This is, as Steve said, we're just waiting for the rain to stop.
Anyone else?
I noticed it's too long Sugar Way, but it's on the deed. It talks about the restricted buffer restrictions.
Sugar Way.
Sugar Way.
That's the next one.
That's next.
But it's on...
Sugar Way's the next item.
No, I know, but it's on that, but it's on this one too, isn't it?
Same language is on this one as well, it's about the buffers.
Well, my question is, is if somebody violates that, is that something that the owner deals with versus a city violation?
With the conditions of approval, the code officer has jurisdiction to clean that up.
I mean, what would be the normal process? Is that something with the city? Typically, we have been told by our attorney that the covenants in the subdivision are under support by the members of the community itself, the subdivision or the developer.
Yeah, but you had us put in note number three about the restricted buffers, giving you authority to oversee that. You can require replanning according to that note. It would also be a violation of the DEP permits and DEP would potentially get involved with it also.
Can I see the note? What note, what, excuse me?
The third note of the conditions of approval.
Right here.
We put that into your request.
I was just wondering if somebody disturbs that. Because I noticed it more on Sugar Way, that, I mean, it seems to protect the downhill neighbors. I'm just wondering if somebody violated that, who enforces it?
Just in a quick answer, John, I would say that I would contact the developer if that is correct. And if the developer's already sold all the lots and if there was a...
That would be those associated.
Yeah.
You're also under a DEP permit, correct?
Yeah.
So, I think that if it wasn't rectified, then we could go to DEP. Think the also, the idea we had was, did we mark those or are those going to be flagged somehow on the lot as we had discussed?
Yes.
So that neighbor, so that people that are now purchasing into this understand, you know, you read this, you purchase this, you don't even know what you're doing, three years later, you don't really know, you're mowing it or whatever. So, the idea was trying to take as much, take steps, as many steps as possible to make sure that those would be respected in a natural state to serve their function. So, it's not perfect, but it's a, we're moving, every time there's a project, I think we'd do a bit better on it on that front.
Well, thank you for coming. He's just smiling at me. No panic, Tara. This is for a final. Everything was there, going to the minutes, we had nothing missing. And what would the board like to do? Do you want to go down the list of submission requirements for a final?
Should we open up a public comment at this stage?
Not just yet. I'd like to know what, before we...
We can go through that.
Now, this is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to comment on this matter may do so. I ask that before you speak, you go up to the lectern, state your name for the record, and tell us what you have to say. Does anyone wish to speak? Okay, close the public hearing, thank you. Proposed name of the subdivision and name of municipality, with assessors, map, and lot numbers. Actual field survey of the boundary lines. Number of acres and proposed subdivision. Indication type of sewer's disposal. Indication of type of water supply system to be used in the subdivision. Date plan was prepared, magnetic and true north point and so forth. Location of any zoning boundaries affecting the subdivision. Location and size of existing and proposed sewers, water mains, culverts, and drainage ways on or adjacent to the property. Location names and present, location names and present widths of existing and proposed streets, highways, easements, building lines, et cetera. Width and location of any streets or public improvements. Any posses of land to be dedicated to public use. If any, of course, the subdivision is a flood prone, flood prone area, the boundaries of any flood hazard areas. Any proposed subdivisions located within 200 foot at the closest point must connect, oh, public sewer, we don't have it out there. Stormwater management plan, erosion and sedimentation control plan. Phosphorus impact analysis, contour lines. Areas with sustained slopes greater than 25 percent. And the location and method disposal for land clearing and construction to be, I mean, I assume since no one interrupted me that nothing was found to be missing. Seems to be all there. Okay, are we satisfied with the material presented such as the stormwater plan? Okay. Does anyone have a motion? Oh, Michelle, we're stopped.
Why, what's the matter?
Daryl's not here, we can't do motions.
Just the chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
For a final plan of a major subdivision titled Bridge Twin Estates Phase Two for Bridge Twin LLC. Proposal is to extend Bridge Twin Road which is located off the Mariahville Road, Route 180, to create a 14 lot residential land subdivision located on a 27 acre parcel, tax map 68 Lot 3 and map 67 Lot 3 in the rural zone. The motion is to approve this application.
Under the provisions of the subdivision partners. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please?
Can you second?
I didn't.
Unless he's still sitting there.
Thank you.
Well, we still have a chance to mess you up here. Next item of business is revisions to an approved major subdivision entitled Main Estates Phase Two for Main Estates LLC. The revision is to modify the stormwater management plan including adding an additional stormwater easement on lots 21 and 22 with a 13 lot subdivision located on the 16 acre property off of Sugar Way. Tax map 33, map 33 Lot 4 and 33 Lot 4 dash 21 in the neighborhood zone. So, a revision to an approved subdivision, the review is limited to the matters before us, nothing else is opened up in that. So, a summary, please.
We had to have a substantial buffer along the north side of the property. And a place along the road along lots 21 and 22 to handle the stormwater. This is something that came through the DEP review. We're on land.
It was a matter that initial conversations with them indicated that it would just have to, it would be a standalone project by itself, the second phase, because of the timeline of when the first phase was permitted. And then when we actually submitted the application in that format, they kind of did a sidestep on it and basically we had some misinterpretation of each other. And so, we ended up having to do more treatment to the stormwater because of Phase One's impacts. So, we had to go back in, instead of just doing detention with the pond, we ended up having to actually do some filtration, some water quality treatment on it. And that's what spurred the revisions that are before you tonight.
Questions from the board? Any member of the public wish to comment on this matter? This is a public hearing. This does not seem to me to be complicated, but we're usually good at finding ones.
Through all that with the DEP, I mean, you had worked through that, I mean...
Excuse me?
DEP is now satisfied?
Yes, they've issued their permit. The permit was just issued, so we do have the permit. We'll get a copy into the town, the city promptly.
Would anyone like to make a motion regarding this matter?
I make a motion. We vote on subdivision titled Main Estates Phase Two for Main Estates LLC. Division modify the stormwater management plan including adding an additional stormwater easement area on lots 21 and 22 of a 13 lot subdivision, zoned on a 16 acre property off of Sugar Way. Tax map Lot 33 slash four and 33, four dash 21, and it's in the neighborhood zone.
Is there a second? Thank you. We have two seconds. Number's got it.
Who's second?
Barbara.
Barb? Sorry.
Any discussion? All in favor of this application, please?
Thank you again.
You're welcome.
I gave them an email today. Yeah, I will, okay.
Do you guys have my Lars to sign?
Not tonight, I'll bring them in for next month's meeting.
Have a nice evening, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item of business is the final plan for a major site use development plan in minor subdivision entitled 121 Main Street, Melissa Chacarillas. The proposal is to subdivide the existing building located on a 1,885 square foot lot at 121 Main Street, tax map 134, Lot 34, into three commercial units in the town, downtown zone. Is someone representing the applicant, please? Go ahead.
I can't help her. This is Melissa's partner, business partner. The last time, if we remember correctly, if that's all right. Last time, one of the issue that was remaining was that they had to secure an outside staircase for fire and they did not have the, some type of reciprocal easement or some type of permission from the owner of 86this, and that's been taken care of. And there was, there was one more comment, if I remember?
They didn't sign the deed.
Yeah, the deed wasn't signed, so we got a copy of that signed deed. Was there a third item?
Was that linking Mrs. Chacarillas to the LLC? That was something that we had questioned. There wasn't any correlation between her and the LLC name?
Correct. I think, but, I mean, I just, it's not completely fresh in my mind we did this because we missed the meeting the month before. And this project had absolutely no issues, so it kind of like slipped out of my mind. I'm sorry about that. But the deed issues, the issue, all the pages and the restrictions, all the signing was done. They got also what they needed from 86this in a form and shape that was acceptable to us. Do you remember? I think that was, I mean, it's quite a, just a technicality at this point, so.
Any questions for the applicant?
No. My, more question, just observation, I think on the last meeting also that was, I think it was Mrs. Noneyell was just defining that relationship, so I think she was on the deed, and I see that letter, so.
Yes.
So, it's all good.
Yeah, I think their lawyer, they got a new lawyer, the lawyer quit or something, retired, yeah.
No questions?
So, it's a public hearing, does anyone wish to comment on this matter? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. What would the board like to do? It's been found complete. There is not much, not much else to do on the final. We have the materials that we needed.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the final plan for a major use site development plan in minor subdivision titled 121 Main Street for Melissa, pardon me, Chacarillas. Proposal is to subdivide the existing building located on a 1,885 square foot lot on 121 Main Street, tax map 134, Lot 34, into three commercial units in the downtown zone.
And under Article Seven, the subdivision ordinance?
We're reviewing them under, it's a subdivision, they'll need to be recorded, but we're reviewing them under site plan.
Yes, but we're, it's also on the, it's really...
Yes, and it's listed at both, if I remember correctly, so.
Article Six, okay. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, please? Thank you. You're free.
So, tomorrow you can come and pick up your plans. Okay? Okay?
And my Lars?
She has my Lars right here.
Next item of business is final plan for a major use site development and major subdivision titled commercial, commercial development for Ellsworth Associates. The proposal is constructed. Two commercial buildings totaling 16,881 square feet on a 1.8 acre parcel located at 208 High Street, currently developed as an automotive dealership. Tax map 131 Lot 47 in the urban zone. Building A, 9,500 square, 9,500 square feet is proposed to encompass a barber shop, Barbara Beauty Shop, a retail store, and a medical dental office building. Building B, 7,381 square feet is proposed as a retail store. Is someone representing the applicant, please?
Yep. Good evening, Doug Reynolds with Goral Palmer. Again, just going through, it's been a couple months since we've been here. The latest information that we passed along was, we were working with the town and the town's engineer relative to stormwater requirements, and we met all those relative to the concerns that were, that were, the town had and staff had. We also revised our plans and took number of the TRT meeting comments. Again, we'll come up with, you know, details and things like that. Again, we welcome any additional questions and look forward to getting approval tonight, if possible.
Michelle?
Yes.
You just looked like you were going to say something. No.
If you want me to say something, I always have something to say.
That's very perceptive of you.
So, again, we missed the meeting, so I think things get a bit lost, and for me anyway, it gets lost. I'm sure it gets lost for you as well. I think in this case, really one of the remaining issues, a big issue, was the stormwater matter. There has been changes. What we did is we met with, was not a peer review, we hired an engineer, a Begotek, who we work with a lot, to represent us, and we met with Goral Palmer, with their stormwater person, and we sat down and, actually, I was with you, sorry. It was a long time, it was almost, you know, over two months now. And we kind of went to the law that has been recently amended and went back and started picking apart what could have been picked up and not picked up. And so, they're treating some of the neighbors' water as a credit. They were able to take credit for rooftops now that you weren't before. So, we did a whole bunch of thing, and we sat down and we were able to comfortably meet the stormwater, both in terms of quantity management, which is one thing that was very, you know, we were trying to do things that were a bit creative, but it was not working out because they could not demonstrate a benefit, quantify a benefit that we needed to. So, now they're meeting quantity and both quality. So, I think that was a big remaining item anyways from my position, and I'm definitely comfortable with what is now being presented.
Questions from the board?
So, this, will that, the...
No, go ahead.
The stormwater, it will not, the quality of the stormwater will not hurt Cardbrook, right?
Correct.
Well, I don't, I guess, I think, I think we can say is the quality of stormwater meets the city ordinance and meets the state ordinance.
Right.
I mean, I would prefer having that on the record.
Okay.
John?
Well, I don't have a question on stormwater. I have a question.
It doesn't matter.
Okay. Chris Reynolds, just for a little background information, I worked as a Ellsworth police officer for 38 years, last 16 as chief of police. So, I'm concerned about the agreement, the requirement that the developer contributes $2,500 to the traffic light synchronization. Now, I'd like to point out that when I retired, which was three years ago, those traffic lights were synchronized. And they should be synchronized now if the city kept up to date. So, I find it a little uncomfortable that the city is requiring the developer to take care of maintenance that the city should be taking care of. I mean, I would compare this to, I mean, there's some signs across the high street there concerning the Senate turn lane, that there should be 10 signs, there's six, three of which are functional. You know, should Mr. Reynolds pay for new signs there? I don't think so. So, I mean, I think this is something that the city seems to be requiring the developer to do, but the city should be taking care, they should, those traffic lights should be synchronized today.
So, I get, do you want me to respond to that?
Got somewhere.
John is absolutely right in the sense that they were once synchronized. We have, and I think what John may be referring to is, we don't ask developers to pay for existing deficiencies. And I think that's maybe where you're going. It's how I'm hearing it anyways. This, this agreement with the 2,500 came out of a handshake, really, not a mandated thing for them to do. And what, what it was on is that the developer met with the TRT and we had a big powwow on the traffic analysis. And if I remember correctly, and correct me if I'm wrong, part of the traffic analysis said that was referring to, there was a lot of things that was not necessarily comparing completely apples to apples in the traffic analysis. And I was like, well, that's not really this, and that's not really that. And then in addition to that, it was saying, well, if you optimize the timing, which we don't have to do, but if you optimize the timing at this point, you're going to have the mobility on the corridor. And we're saying, well, you know, but you're saying, okay, you're not, we're not saying that the traffic, as, as the traffic analysis was showing that there was going to be anything that they would have done, but they were definitely telling us, well, if you improve the timing, you're going to have benefits. And basically, I turned around to the owner, I said, do you want to help us in contributions? He said, yes, and we had a handshake, and that's how it was created. Simple as that. It was... It was not anything more complicated than that. One other thing that happened is that, the, the, two things. One of the letters that were given to us towards this contribution was not in our favor in the sense that I was going to have to basically do a lot of steps to get our money. And so he changed a letter and said, well, I will contribute to the timing before I secure a building permit. So that's how the story went down.
But does, I have the letter from Mr. Shapiro, that ran to only twenty-five hundred dollars. Now, they say the traffic signals immediately to the northwest and the southeast, do they talk about the three?
Yep.
Key back?
Yep. You've already, so, John, we've already started doing an inventory of the traffic signal, all the signals we have. We've also looked at what we have for equipment, what is not working, what's working, and then the next phase is going to be doing some optimization on some of those signals. We had a similar agreement with Jackson Lab when they came towards helping us towards put equipment. In this case, it was equipment to get a smart system, a smart light, where we did not have one, so. Instead of them, and so Jackson Lab, just, I know I'm bringing something else, but Jackson Lab, instead of having them come later, or us look later, because now we were approving something now. We weren't entirely sure how everything was going to happen. So we made a deal then not to come back and do a second study later and create problems in things that are not certain, and agreed to a new smart signal, so. As long as we meet the ordinance, we feel as staff that there's not an issue.
No, but I find it hard to believe that it would cost twenty-five hundred dollars to resynchronize those lights currently. Whatever deficiencies they have right now, because they are out of sequence, it's obvious they're out of sequence. I mean, I find it hard to believe that it costs twenty-five hundred dollars, and even it did, but I still say I don't think it's his responsibility to pay it.
Do you want an answer from the person that's handling this person, I can call him in right now? He's called Jason Engel right now, he's, he can, he's the one that's been doing this, would you like me to call him in? He should show up any minute now.
I think the gist of this is that this is a voluntary action on the developer's part.
You ask, we deliver.
Michelle pretty much summed up the, how we, we came to the twenty-five hundred dollars. And that is an estimate from Sebago to redo the timing on the three signals from Shaw's through to McDonald's. Those timings have not been updated since two thousand and seven or eight, when they were originally done at that time. We're currently in the process of working with Sebago to do an inventory of all twelve intersections in the city, including pulling down the current timing plans on each intersection, and they'll go back and identify where we can make improvements to those. We've already spent, I think we spent fifty-five hundred of city money on that project already. So it's kind of part of an overall larger project, and because of the, correct me if I'm wrong, the impact that this project was going to have on those signals, they did agree to contribute twenty-five hundred towards that. And that came from them, you know, at that meeting, they, that was a, they brought it up, I mean, they offered that. So we didn't even go there initially, so.
In the ordinance, just, I'm thinking here, in the ordinance, there is a place that clearly talks about traffic signals and their timing, and clearly states that if you are, if a re-timing needs to be done, you need to pay for it, and you need to pay for the study by the city's engineer, and you need to pay for the re-timing.
I think probably also, some of the discussions.
Do you want the section?
Was based upon the entrance to the property itself, as far as left in, left out. Did you make a left-hand turn into that traffic? And the timing, and what they did for the timing of the traffic control, they wanted to make sure that they were able to accomplish a left-out from there, rather than having to go right out all the time. Because that was crucial to this development, that they were able to go right in and left out.
Michelle, I'm familiar with the section you talked about, that the ordinance calls for the developer to pay for that. But I'll also note that the additional trips that this development is putting on the High Street is not significant compared to what's on there now. So, like, we don't want to beat a dead horse.
And, may I say one more thing? John, I have, and I have a longstanding relationship on traffic discussions, so. Very long, actually, I learned.
Thank you, Jason.
I've learned everything I know about traffic, that to start with, by listening to John. You know, we have to realize that this plan works, you know, that we are mandated to have a judicial mind and look at what is presented for study and compare it to what the ordinance asks for. But tonight, I was heading down High Street, and we're, Wednesday night at five o'clock, and there was traffic all the way past L L B. I mean, car to car to car to pass the site, and it was jammed. And so we have to realize that, you know, maybe it's not necessarily a big impact, but that system is not the most efficient system, and more importantly, what came out of the study was that if we re-time the signals, then we would have improved mobility, so. That's the story, sticking to them.
Does anyone, any member of the public wish to comment on this application? No. Close the public hearing. What would the board like to do? A board have any further questions?
I have one question, I see that there was a plan to have an easement for the sidewalk to the city. Is the maintenance of that sidewalk, is that, you're understanding that the city will maintain that?
Correct.
Any other question?
Can I say something else? And it's, it's not apples to apples, but I want to say that in this case, the developer did voluntarily contribute to the stormwater. On the flip side, the city went down to Portland to facilitate a meeting on their dime, without hiring an engineer on their dime, to help the applicant. And if we had not missed, if we did not have to miss the main meeting, we would not have gone down there. So there's some give and take a lot in what we do, we really try to help the developers be ready. It's a win-win for us to have development come to the city, to have development that meets the ordinance and is our improvements to development. So I feel that, in that sense, that taking that voluntary contribution is quite acceptable, so.
I guess just one other question. It says that the amount's going to be paid in full prior to requesting a building permit. Is the city by the same token going to guarantee that the lights are going to be timed correctly before they open?
I can't answer that, but I feel that, and again, that would be a Jason question, that we are well under, you know, on our way to, not necessarily to wait for the opening of that project to time it. The developer had the choice to sign an agreement with us, saying that if we had not re-timed the signal within two years, we would give him his money back, and he chose not to take this just to freely advance the money.
So, what would the board like to do? Are we satisfied that the materials presented fulfill the ordinance requirements? And if the stormwater plan is acceptable?
Are you still asking for a waiver then on the lighting?
There is a waiver on the lighting that was given as part of the.
Right, I see that.
Yeah.
It does meet Darrell Wilson's ratios.
Right, right, right.
Can you stand there, that's not any ordinance, so.
We don't want to.
No.
Beat that to death today, baby.
Well, I can if you want.
No, no, I just wondered if you wanted us to do it. Is there a motion regarding the waiver? We need to do something with the waiver before we can proceed. Unless you, unless you want to just fold that into a motion regarding this project.
And the waiver is just a deviation from the lighting standard?
Okay. One that doesn't harm the general health and welfare of the citizens of the city.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the final plan for a major use site development and major subdivision titled commercial development for Ellsworth Associates LLC. The proposal is to construct two buildings totaling sixteen thousand eight hundred eighty-one square feet on a one-point-eight acre parcel located on two oh eight High Street, currently developed as an automotive dealership, tax map one thirty-one, lot forty-seven, in the urban zone. Building A is a ninety-five hundred square foot, is proposed to encompass a barber, beauty shop, a retail store, and a medical dental office. Building B is seven thousand three hundred eighty-one square feet, is proposed to encompass a retail store. Along with this motion, I recommend that we approve the waiver for the lighting standard for this application.
Second?
I have a question. Can I throw in?
Well, I'm just, I'm with, yeah, before the second, yeah, okay.
Okay, well, I'm just, it says specifically, building A. It's going to either encompass barber shop, beauty shop, retail store, or medical dental office. Does that mean it has to be one of those? Could it be a pet store or what?
If it is different.
If we voted on it this way.
Yeah, well, if it is different, and the code enforcement could refer this back to us if it is considered a change of use.
Yeah, but typically, you're approving spaces, not use.
Okay. All right, right, yeah.
If there was a significant traffic increase, when Dwight, Dwight does a business license process, so we know what's going on, and Dwight always has an ability to move people to the planning board if needed. If it was a significant increase in traffic, say, what's the name of the coffee shop there? Starbucks. Say, Starbucks came tomorrow, this would come back to planning board. Okay? So if there's a significant increase in potential impacts, it's not just going straight to.
Yeah, also had it the note to the plan relative to the change of use would have to.
Yeah, we had that, yes.
Okay, yeah, yeah. So ask, go to Dwight. He decided to come to us, okay, got you.
Okay, is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Okay.
Who's seconding?
I'll second it. Fighting here. You ask the question, I'll say. Oh, yeah.
This is called.
Fight more time.
This is called cooperation. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please indicate. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll be here for a little while, I'm just going to wait for my.
So now the hard work.
Okay. Next item of the business is a preliminary plan for a major use site development titled D M and J Waste, D M and J Waste. The proposal is to construct a compost facility for sludge from wastewater treatment plants. From wastewater. Is that correct?
What's the question?
Sludge, what is the, where's this sludge, sludge coming from?
I want to let the applicant explain that project. In my best interest in this case, it's not stormwater, it's not traffic.
Okay, because it's, right.
It's in there, it's in there.
Okay, and seafood waste. The proposed development area is about one hundred and seventy-three thousand square feet on a thirteen-point-one acre parcel of land located off the Mariahville Road, but accessed via the industrial road. The property consists of two parcels, a five-acre parcel of which about three acres is occupied by a demo debris facility, and an eight-point-one acre vacant parcel, respectively tax map lot fifty-seventy-five and fifty-seventy-six in the business park zone. The proposal is to include a total of twenty thousand six hundred square feet of pads and/or storage areas, and one thousand seven hundred fifty square foot compost storage area, and a two hundred and forty square foot office building. Is someone representing?
Before you start, may I just say something? Andrew, this is the DEP application that was emailed to you, that's not necessarily necessary or required for the project, but this is just a preliminary, but I think it's also going to answer a lot of questions that you may have for the final, so we send you emails. Tracy was set, so she was not able to make the deadline, so we were a bit late on that, but you'll have those, and you can review them for the next meeting. So this.
Oh, thank you, Tracy.
I don't know. I'm going to take her word for it. I'm working for her.
Yeah, right. We're going to pass this state of midnight.
So, Andrew McCullough, as well as Tracy and Josh Wellman, are, we are all here to answer the questions regarding this application to the city. I'll try to summarize, and I have worked with Josh and Tracy to develop the site plans, the stormwater management, the erosion control, grading, the application to the city of Ellsworth for the site plan review, as well as I prepared the N R P A Tier One application to the DEP for the wetland impacts for this project. Josh and Tracy, because they are going to be operating this facility, they have prepared the actual compost facility application that you have tonight. So, when it comes to most of the questions regarding the grading, drainage, site, or stormwater, erosion control, traffic, most of the questions that you will have regarding the general site and its applicability to the city's ordinance, I'll answer, or I'll do my best to answer. Josh and Tracy will be able to better answer how this facility is going to be used, what's coming in, what will then be going out. So, we did, as, as Michelle stated, there are two parcels of land here, and that's why there is a property line shown through the site. One parcel is a total of five acres, and the other parcel is eight-point-one acres. Again, three acres is occupied by the existing waste transfer facility. So, this project encompasses the other two acres on that lot, as well as a portion of the eight-point-one acre lot. The wetlands, I delineated the wetlands, and as part of the application, the wetland boundary is shown on your plan. The project will impact, I think it's like fourteen thousand nine hundred and fifty square feet of forested freshwater wetland. There are no bernal pools on, on the property or in the vicinity of the facility as far as it relates to wetland impacts. And that application has been submitted to the DEP. The access to this site will be through the existing transfer station at D M and J Waste, or Ellsworth Waste. So the trucks will come in and enter through and into this area. Traffic will be minimal. There may be a couple deliveries a week. And then as material is made, then there will be several loads maybe leaving over time, but traffic is, is minimal here. The stormwater is, we have designed the system to the, the entire impervious area, or the entire working area, is going to drain to an underdrain soil filter. And so therefore, the water will be treated, as well as peak flows will be controlled before it is discharged to the level spreader. We have developed with that a sediment and erosion control plan following the city's main best management practices. I do have to check because one of the comments on the final TRT was that the maintenance plan would need to be submitted. I apologize if it's not in the application. I have prepared a maintenance plan and, and for the stormwater system. The, there will be a small office building where the worker or workers will be able to come inside, do any testing that they need to do, and/or get warm essentially in the winter time, or wash off. Keep notes, keep records, et cetera. Wastewater from that will go into a holding tank, and then that holding tank will be pumped. And that's fluent, or the waste taken down to the city of Ellsworth Transfer, or wastewater treatment plant. The sludge that comes into the site will go into bins, and as far as the processing, like I say, Josh and Tracy can explain more about that. But it will be on a concrete slab. It is shown as. It is shown as the thirty-eight feet by two-hundred-foot compost building. I, I don't really want to, I want to clarify what it is as far as a building. It's a, it's a, it's a open-air structure similar to actually what's used out at Pleasant River Sawmill. Right, it's a, it's a clear span, so it's open, airy. It's, it's in order to keep the rain off the sludge. So I hesitate to call it a building, but it's, it's a cover, there's a cover over this.
But it's a structure under the ordinance.
It's a structure under the ordinance.
If it's a structure under the ordinance and it has some height, then it has some height.
Correct, right.
But it's not.
It's, it's not an enclosed building, let's say.
It was an enclosed building.
Is it open all four sides, or?
It's open on one side.
Just the front side.
Okay, okay.
But it's a, it's a pipe framework building with like, it's, the roof and the sides are just fabric. And it can be moved, it can be added on to, it can be mounted on the ground, it can be mounted on concrete or retainer box. It's a, it's a quick and easy way for a roof.
It's a tubular, yes, it's a tubular frame system. I've also seen them used sometimes for salt sand storage buildings.
Yes, yeah.
So it's a heavy fabric structure, but it allows air through, et cetera.
It's a form of tarp, right?
Yes.
Yes.
It's what they use in Quebec City for garages. Not proud to say, well, that's like, it's what it is, pretty rampant. It's exactly.
I mean, the, the cars turn into compost?
No, you put it in the winter, you have to, it's like winter tires. You can't put it on in before a certain date, you have to take it off for a certain date, but it's a, it can stand snow low, that, it's just.
So, so back to this, so this area with this concrete slab, where the sludge initially is delivered, will have an underdrain under it, so that any leachate from it will also drain into a holding tank. And then that leachate itself will be pumped out and taken to the wastewater treatment plant, obviously. So, so there's no leachate, so to speak, then running off to our pond. The leachate is going back to the treatment plant. The there are other stockpiles or storage areas shown for things like shavings, also for sand and loam that will be mixed with this material, as well as in the area for creating windrows for either food waste or seafood waste in the future that can be converted into compost. So they have tried to create a space where all these things can be processed into usable materials. And so from there, we did also provide you with the original site plan that was done for D M and J Enterprises in two thousand and eight to show you the relation to the existing site. One comment that, another comment that Michelle had on the TRT final memo was some additional notation regarding block coverage. That the light fixture, which we've asked for a waiver on submitting the lighting plan at this time, because there's only one location for a light fixture here that, as required by the ordinance. I mean, we're not, we don't have technically parking areas or other things like that. But we will be providing a light fixture on the building for the active building entrance. And that fixture, I've asked that we have the ability then to submit that fixture to Dwight with the building plans.
And we agreed that you were noted on the plan, though regardless of the fixture, it would be installed at full, it would be a full cutoff.
It will be a full cutoff. In the lighting, in my lighting narrative, I did commit to that it would be a full cutoff fixture in compliance with the ordinance, but we will put a note on the plan to that effect.
This is in the middle of nowhere.
Well, there's bears and deer up there.
Sorry.
There's a moose, too. We, Mike Hany has prepared a letter, and I know, I'm sure he can speak to that, but he has prepared a letter. I received it about fifteen minutes after I had sent my thirteen copies down to the city hall, so that's why that is not in the application. We do have a letter from Natural Areas that I can provide you for final with no concerns. We did receive, I received it yesterday. We did receive a letter from Historic Preservation yesterday that they have no concerns, so I can provide that for final. And I've tried to narrate the different setback lines, but I can also narrate them on the final plan and add a couple, add stormwater to the title of SP two and SP three, which are my existing and my developed conditions plan.
So, Andrew?
Yes.
So for the submission, you're still missing your letters under C, the fire inspection, the, I don't have that letter, correct? Okay, so the, the board doesn't have it. The, so under C, that's still missing for submission, and then you're also missing for submission, and you're asking also for a waiver, that's really all you're missing. Can you talk to, sorry, I just have a question on, for submission requirements, Chair, Mr. Chairman? They are required to provide us all the covenants restriction or conditions that may be existing or may be imposed. Can you talk to me, so I received a paper that says there was a deed covenant pertaining to the tank, and my question is, does, do we need to put this on the plan somewhere? Can you explain to me that deed covenant a bit? And what tank is that?
That's for the wastewater holding tank.
The leach, leachate? Or the stormwater?
Well, not the stormwater, for the leachate tank and the and the tank for the, for the sewage from the office.
So whatever that is, if you can refer in some shape or form on the, so that would be a missing submission requirement, and that's all we have.
It's, it's required by the subsurface wastewater disposal rules for use of a holding tank. And so Dwight and I have discussed it, but yes, we can put a note regarding that on the final plan.
Explain, on the application, the developer of the property owner name is D M and J Waste, but on the deed, it describes WTS Properties.
Yeah, that's, the WTS Properties is the property owner. It's a company, it's a real estate holding company, owned fifty percent by myself and fifty percent by Mr. Wellman. There's a triple net lease from WTS to D M and J Waste Management.
That should be, that triple net lease should be in your paperwork? It's also part of the DB application that was submitted tonight?
Yes.
Well, if I may, the project overview says that the applicant, D M and J Waste, owns the property. That's not the case.
Which application?
No.
This.
The application form to the, to the planning board.
Yeah, there has a project overview page.
Right, no, I'm, I'm, I'm wrong there.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So.
So correct that for the file.
Yes, I will.
What should it say, Andrew? Okay, I'll just make a note, it needs to be straightened out.
Yeah, that need, regarding ownership, it needs to be straightened out.
Still more, we thought, I thought we had straightened it out, but it needs.
Well, I think it's straight, it's just that it's not reflected in the text.
No, you're right.
So I think that maybe the confusion is, is that the applicant for the DEP permit is D M and J Waste because they're the operating entity?
That's right, yeah.
This is just a matter of wording.
But no, it's, it's, it's just, right, yeah.
So everything lines up.
Yep, the applicant is D M and J Waste, but the owner is WTS.
WTS Properties, okay.
So the owner is WTS?
WTS Properties. WTS Properties.
It's just a matter of.
Whiteout.
Well, yeah, but as far as getting it, getting it right on the application.
No, you're right, no, as far as.
So that it, it can't be challenged.
Correct, no, that's correct.
I guess one more thing, and I think it's, I just want to, I know we're not there yet, but just to remind you, there was a, I received a written comment about the project. I think it was fine pink.
Right, yes.
But.
Could you go over this one more time? In our little packet, we got one that says you are leasing from somebody.
Yes.
There's two parcels, and the yellow one that you were buying.
No.
It's land.
Both, both parcels are owned by WTS Properties, and D M and J Waste leases both parcels from WTS Properties.
Say it one more time, I'm sorry.
Okay, WTS Properties owns both parcels. They're the owner of both parcels.
Okay.
And you just lease it back to you.
And then we lease it back to D M and J Waste.
Okay.
So I.
Both properties.
Yes, yes.
Because my concern is, if something happens, say D M and J Waste goes bankrupt, I mean hypothetically, or something like that, DWS would be responsible for whatever's on that land?
That's the landlord.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just like in the tenant landlord situation.
Yeah, so if there's compost left there, or sludge, or whatever, they would be responsible to clean it out, or whatever.
It's tenant and landlord.
Right, the landlord.
If the tenant moves out, leaves a mess, the landlord's responsible for that.
Right, okay.
So I guess, I mean, to help you maybe understand better, I, I think maybe Josh and/or Tracy should explain maybe the operations a little bit, or at least give you an overview. Would that be good?
Sure, sure. I can explain that. Well, first of all, what would be bringing in the main revenue generator would be the sludge waste coming in. And that would be coming in via roll-off truck, roll-off containers, loads, and it would be two to three loads per week. It would come in and be dumped on a concrete pad, and then be scooped up with a loader and put into a mixer. And it's a three-to-one mix. So it'd be a scoop of sludge into the mixer with three buckets of shavings or sawdust. And it gets mixed, the whole load would get mixed up, and then it gets put into the building. And the building has ten bunkers. The bunkers are eighteen feet wide by six feet high by.
Thirty-eight feet deep.
Thirty-eight feet deep, roughly. And there's pipes, there's going to be like two to three pipes on the floor of the bunkers that have holes in the pipes. A layer of shavings or chips goes, wood chips probably, goes on top of the pipes, so the air can come up through the chips. The mixed sludge gets put on top of the pipes. And there's blowers that blow air through the compost, through the sludge. But, and then before that happens, we put a layer of already-made compost over the sludge pile after it's been put on top of the pipes. And air gets forced up through the compost, it's put on a timer. It is an air that goes into it all the time, but it's like, throughout the day, the pumps will come on every hour for fifteen minutes. And the, and the air gets pushed into the pile, which makes the bugs work and the, and the the breakdown of the material starts. The temperature of the piles goes up, and that kills all the pathogens. Once the temperature has gone up to between a hundred and twenty and a hundred and forty degrees Fahrenheit, that, for three days, that kills all the pathogens in the pile. The pile has to sit on the pipes for twenty-one days. Each day, we do temperatures. We do them at two feet and we do them at four feet, and you do them in different spots on the pile, because you've got to watch the temperatures. Everybody that hears about composting sludge or seafood waste, or any of that, that worry about odors. I went to school for a week and studied it, we've been to other sites. We've been to Lincoln, up in Lincoln Sewer Treatment Plant. They've been composting their sludge since nineteen eighty-six. When we went there, there was no odor. The, the person that ran that site is going to come down and help us in the beginning. He's retired now, and he's going to help us run the site, get us started. Even though we've been to different places, and I went to school, we still want to have some extra help. But mixing the compost the right way eliminates the odors. If you get too, if the, if the mix is too moist or too dry, you're going to have problems, and you're going to have to break down the pile and redo it. But there's ways of checking the moisture, you know, it's a, at the beginning, you know, it's going to be a learning, a little bit of a learning curve, but we're going to have someone there that's got experience. So, and hopefully, we're going to do the sludge, and then we're also going to do seafood and food waste in windrows. That's going to be outdoors on like a concrete pad or a paved pad. And it's the same idea, if it's mixed right, it's, it's very minimal odors. And hopefully, you know, it will help. We plan on working with Maine Shellfish, if we can, and taking the seafood waste that's going into the compactor right now at the city's transfer station out, because that is a major odor. We smell it every day at our transfer station, so hopefully we can. We smell it every day at our transfer station, so hopefully we can help eliminate that. So, once we make the, the material in the building, this sludge compost, after twenty-one days, it comes out and goes on a curing pad. And then, once it's cured for another twenty-one days on that pad, we can mix it, or we can sell it just the way it is. We can mix it with loom or sand or other materials, or contractors, you know, construction workers. The state uses a lot of it for shouldering, um, and whatnot. They can come in and buy it just the way it is, and then they can mix it. You can't just put it down just the way it is. It has too much nitrogen in it, you have to mix it with other soil. Um, the seafood waste, the food waste will be more for like gardens, landscaping, you know, people growing vegetables, stuff like that.
Transported off-site, the final product in truck, trailer container?
Yeah, we, you know, you could come in and buy it by the pickup load, you could buy it by dumpster load, you know, however. We're gonna have a loader there and loading, like a loading ramp, and, yeah. So, there's many different ways you could, you could buy it.
How much percentage-wise do you, you think is gonna be usable for compost?
Um, all of it will be usable.
All of it?
Yeah. The sludge that comes in...
I see where you got somewhere it says metal storage area. Oh, that's the area, never mind, I was thinking you could go to store metal, but okay, never mind.
It's a storage area.
Yeah, the sludge that comes in and we compost it?
Yeah.
That material, we will take and put on the curing pad after it's turned into compost?
Mm-hmm.
And then tested, ready to go, they'll, you know, all be sold.
So no waste?
Nope, no waste.
Just, just the runoff?
The runoff.
The water and...
Yeah. There's, there's, you know, there's, the outside curing pad, there's, once it goes out on the curing pad, it's compost. So there's no danger of, you know, with that stormwater runoff, it's gonna go into a detention bond. But there's no pathogens, there's, there's nothing harmful in it.
Is that curing pad, you talking about the process, large compost storage area?
Yeah, so the compost curing pad. So, once it comes out of the building, it's not, it, it's not completely cured. Um, you could, you could keep it in a pile and cure it for an additional six months and have a really stable product. And by, what I mean by stable is that the nitrogen level is down enough that it's more suitable for growing without having to mix it with another type of soil. But once it comes out of the building, is after the pathogens have been killed off, um, and vector control as far as bugs and stuff that could, you know, get into it, that's all been met by time and temperature levels that are monitored. But once we bring it outside, it will, it will sit outside on the curing pad for at least eight weeks, um, for additional, um, curing or like stabilization.
I mean, the longer it sits, the better it is.
The longer it sits, the better it is.
Yeah, just like with your commonure, you know.
Is it gonna travel on bug, on bugs?
Um, well, part of...
Done right, it shouldn't, the food waste and seafood waste is where you would attract bugs.
Yeah.
And we learned it in school, if, once it comes in, the secret is, once it comes in and gets dumped onto the pad, the mixing pad, it needs to be mixed immediately. You can't let it sit. Because that's where you get your odors, your bugs, your vectors, all that stuff. You gotta mix it up, get it in the mixer with carbon source, get it mixed up, get it in the windrow, and cover it with a layer of already made compost. That's like your biofilter. You put that right over the top of it.
Part of the, if you look at the DEP application, part of the requirements in their first submission is odor control. Um, and there's actually an odor control plan in there, which goes into more detail about the things that you're talking about, not letting water pool up, keeping it covered so that bugs and stuff aren't getting into it. Um, so there's a management plan in there, um, for odor control and vector reduction.
Is there anything in the city ordinance that, for odor control, is there anything that we really have to decide on, to that matter?
Uh, we don't have, I, I think there's a mention in passing, you know, but there's nothing measurable, truly measurable.
Right, so as, as a board, I mean, there's nothing, no standard that we have to...
No, so, to, to, to talk, when we talk about orders, um, when we, if you remember, when we rezoned that area?
Right.
Um, we looked at, um, I, I did a lot of research. Um, we looked at the surrounding, um, land who lived there, moose and deer. A lot of moose in there, there's no really residential home in that area, it's an industrial area. We looked at, uh, the, um, not the predominant wind, but, uh...
Prevailing wind?
Prevailing wind, I was almost there. The prevailing wind. Because we look at a whole bunch of issues, and we felt comfortable that it was not gonna be, it's, it's a, it's, it's in a right zone, well-sighted in the right area. And I think that if you familiarize yourself with the DEP application, you're gonna realize that it's a highly regulated activity under the DEP, in the sense that, uh, they're not just gonna operate, they have to provide logs, they have to maintain things, you're going to be inspected, you're just gonna make sure that you have a license that you need to secure every...
Uh, annually.
Annually. So, if it's a use, if they, if they mismanage their business and they get a lot of complaints and a lot of issues come up, they're not gonna be in operation really long. So I think for me, when I looked into the depth of the DEP application, it became clear that a lot of the things that we could have been worried about is going to definitely be handled by the DEP.
And that's where I was getting out with questions, as far as jurisdiction, I mean, as far as the, this planning board, I mean, is it allowed use?
Yeah.
But, but as far as, um, you know, governing, that, that, that following the rules, if that's following the DEP's jurisdiction...
Well, so that is a great question, and you know, when we rezoned, the question I had is, do we need to add, add some performance standards pertaining to that? And really in an area that we had very little knowledge. And again, what I did is, did a lot of research in a lot of that type of facility, read as much as I could. And when I get into something, I do get into something, and realized that the DEP application really handled everything that we could have thought of, and adequately, more than we can really, they're gonna do a way better job than we could do locally. So, uh, there's, you know, so that really is how we looked at it. We did not add any additional performance standard. And that's a discussion, I think, that if you remember, that we had at the board level.
Well, and, and that's part of my comment, is that it's separating what our role is as a planning board and really, I see this, this topic getting into DEP jurisdiction, where we, as a board, we really have no say in, um, you know, the, the merit of this application or not.
Well, we have a say in the, in the merit as far as it touches upon site plan, but, you know, what they have to, they, they, they've not, the amount of regulation and performance standards that they're going to have to meet, you know, is much higher. Again, they haven't secured their licenses, they just applied. Uh, we would not issue a building permit usually unless all state and federal permits have been secured. Uh, so, um, you know...
Yeah, and, and, and just to fol- just to follow that, I mean, as, as you've been trying to do, I mean, or as, as you've talked about before, earlier tonight, is, is we did note on the plan, um, in the general notes about, uh, the compost facility permit is required, the NRPA wetland permit is required, um, as, as well as the site plan review application. So we, we have noted that, that other permits are required too.
So I think what we did is, you know, every time I review a project, I get smarter. And one other thing I realize is that when we know state and federal permits are required, now I'm gonna, and I started with Andrew, we listed it on the application, in terms of, you know, in addition to that. Um, I, I think that, um, I mean, in terms of where the location of the project, I mean, there's a lot of background and work that's been done, you know, this project that just not decide to be there on a whim, uh, in terms of its location, it doesn't mean that there's still probably comments on that, but, and I think that, again, as you mentioned, DEP's doing it, we did look into that. And I think that if you take the time to browse through or read through the application, you'll be pretty impressed of the scrutiny and, uh, that they are being looked at, so...
And if you, if you do, if, when you are looking through the DEP application, on, um, page fourteen, uh, specific odor control for sledge composting facilities, that was updated by the DEP in two thousand and fifteen. Um, and which put, um, facilities that compost through a treatment sludge, it increases standards for them to control nuisance odors. Because these facilities get a bad rep when they aren't managed properly. If you don't manage the composting proper, process properly, you will get odors, nuisance odors, if it's not managed properly.
But as we've mentioned too, we have more orders right now, and control orders coming up from, uh, just waste from, uh, shellfish and things like this at the city facilities, isn't that correct?
That is correct, yes.
So, we, we're, what we're hoping is, at the end of this, we're going to have less smell...
Don't get your smell meter out right now, because it would probably break.
Well, yeah, I don't, I wonder, I mean, I'd be surprised if the city, if, you know, there hasn't been complaints about the odor coming from the city's facility right now. And if the DEP were to put their standards to the test, the facility probably wouldn't pass.
I mean, Michelle points out that, I mean, it's not a residential area, but it is, there are businesses up there in close proximity. The big thing we're gonna be dealing with is, or DEP's gonna be dealing with is odor, which is a very subjective topic. I mean, what's, smells good to one person, smells terrible to the next. And surprisingly, today, I delivered a vehicle down the Chaius to, the, the person I delivered to who works at the sewer treatment plant, the Chaius. And so I had an education about sludge.
Yeah.
And he used to work at the sewer treatment plant down in Mount Desert, which has some of these facilities.
They do.
So, kinda curious, you know, if, if the city can contact some of these facilities to see exactly how active DEP is in monitoring, because we all know, I mean, DEP gets stretched in, you know, the, what they're supposed to do, you know, isn't what they do. Are they actively monitoring facilities like, like this?
They watch our facility pretty hard, the, you know, the, our solid waste transfer station. You know, they're there once, twice a year, you know, and doing site inspections. Um, so, and then, and they do that every year. They do that every year.
An annual inspection, but there is actually a, a scale to measure odor. It's a five-point scale, and it's, um, an N-butanol scale, which they measure the amount of odor in the air. And it's based on either the length of time the odor exists. So, an all-day odor is different than if you had a really strong odor for one hour. And so they actually have a scale for measuring odor. Um, and one of their new requirements in two thousand and fifteen was that any facility that's composting, um, biosolids or sludge, um, ha- has to keep their odor level below the nuisance odor standard. So they have a way of measuring this.
Are you going to be reporting on your orders, or how does that go?
No.
Because I think, so what I'm, what I'm hearing in John's comment is not just, um, Michelle, check if they're really monitoring, is, okay, if DEP is not as strong as we think they're going to be, as we've experienced in other areas, uh, how are we going to deal with it? So what, you know, what can we do to ensure? So then I go to my, then I think, well, if there was a log or something that you can submit to us, or we can make a requirement in wait, so that we are more involved in the process and, and looking if they do meet the odor control. So I'm gonna look into it, but I'm, I'm not sure what...
Well, I believe they have complaint form.
Yeah, yeah. And actually, we, so, in the permit, there's actually a copy of our complaint form, which we created in-house. So the way it works is that they don't come out and monitor your odors. But if there's a complaint, it's made to our facility or to the department, then we have certain standards that we have to go by. So we have to report, i- if they report it to us, we're required to report it to the DEP. And then, if the DEP believes it's a nuisance odor, then they come out and do the measurement, and it's at the property boundary. So they come out and do a, a measurement using the five-point scale, and it's, it's measured with an albutanol. And N-butanol, uh, that's how they, you know, it's like three parts per million or whatever in the air. They come out and measure it, or a specialist comes out and measures it at the property boundary. So what happens is, is when there's a complaint and the department finds that it's a nuisance odor, that's when they come out and do the measurement.
So, just so to say, so they're going, they know what is the, um, the chemical composition and what's creating the odor, so they're measuring to see if that's in the air and how much amount per, parts per million or billion, right?
Yeah, it's, it's N, N-butanol, but, and that's an odor level that's in the air. But the odors are coming from several different sources, from decom- from the decomposing compost. So if you don't have your mix right, or you don't have enough airspace, or you're not, the, you know, you're not doing a biofilter, then it can go ana- anaerobic in the pile, which is when odors start.
Mm-hmm.
So what our goal is as the management company, is to not have the odor start. And if they do, we're gonna break the pile down and, and re, and remix it, so that we get the proper airspace, the proper amount of moisture in those piles. Because the odor comes from the anaerobic process when the air's not in there, and there's the right amount of moisture for the, the decomposition to work properly.
And so they actually have a machine that measures the odor?
Yeah, they do.
I guess that's why they're gonna send them whiteout.
Okay, so, John, what are you looking for, um, can you kind of, uh, can you kind of like verbalize, um, I mean, just me looking at how involved DEP is is one thing, but what, what really is the actual concern, so I can try to find a way to maybe find a, a measure to, um, address? What's your end concern?
Well, I guess, some of facilities, you know, how prevalent are odor complaints?
That's what they're complaining about here, the neighbors, in our letter, odors.
And if there are complaints made, you know, does it take forever to get DEP involved in the...
That, that Lincoln facility, and I, I see you talking about Darryl Bully.
Yeah, yeah.
That Lincoln facility is on the end of the residential street with the housing project, five, six hundred feet from it.
Which one you talking about?
The one in Lincoln, that's been doing it for a while.
And I know the...
Do they smell?
Mount Desert is right down off Sergeant's Drive, which...
And actually, I, I purchased them, their sludge is used in my garden in the past. The work's good, the graves grow some wiggling weeds, so, you know.
The other thing that I noticed was that...
Those are legal ones.
When I look at the site plan, there's something that stuck out at me. Uh, everything on this site is strategically placed, so you understand. Um, if you look, there's several different setbacks in this. There's fifty-foot, a hundred-foot, and three-hundred-foot setbacks. Those are the standards that DEP has actually laid out because of the issue of odor, um, and, and everything that's going on. Um, and one of the things is basically the three-hundred-foot setback from businesses or occupied business buildings. Um, so that odor level from three-hundred feet, now, measuring that is, is gonna be kinda interesting. If they can smell it three-hundred feet away, you got a problem.
Yeah, we can leave a good tree buffer, too.
Yes, yes. So, you know, and, and, um...
Bad ground drive.
So it's, it's a situation where, you know, as I, I was reading their application, the five or six pages on odor control is very detailed, and it's very interesting to read, page fourteen to seventeen.
But I, I, I do wanna add, the whole odor thing, as John said, is so subjective. When I come down, um, Grant Street, running at lunch, and I go to the turn there where the entrance is to the, to the, um, the dam? And I, I can smell right then, I mean, even when I had, before I take the turn, I can smell the, and I don't like the smell of roasting coffee. I think it smells like burnt toast, and really, well, I mean, the point here, the point here is it's extremely subjective. Um, and it doesn't remind me of coffee, plus, I can smell it when very far away. So I think that, that at three-hundred feet is, 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 is good, but I, I really believe is where the prevailing wind is, and most importantly, is how can they control it, can they control it, and, uh, are they willing to control it correctly? So it is not a nuisance, because, uh, when the wind picks up and things start moving, you will smell it. I mean, just like if you live close to a, uh, dog, um, those, the, the hard dog food, whatever it's called.
Dog food?
Dry dog food.
Dry, okay.
And if you're close to one of those, uh, manufacturers, it smells. I mean, it really smells. I mean, um, when the wind picks, some days you don't, if the wind picks up, you smell it far away. So, I think that's just not, that's, I think it's a good, uh, observation, but I think, uh, for me, when, what John said, it's more of a knowing what we're gonna do at the city if it's not taking care and, and maybe... So I'm gonna call you, and we're gonna talk about it, and we're gonna figure out what we need to do to make sure that he's comfortable with that.
Besides smell, it's water quality. There's concern about the, the neighbors, because they all have drilled water.
John loves stormwater, I'm sure he's gonna get right...
No, not stormwater.
I'm just kidding.
They're worried about the...
They're worried about their drill. Yeah, it's not, yeah, they don't have city water, they got wells.
Correct.
So, they're worried about contamination of their wells.
Well, that's, that is covered in the application, because you're capturing any moisture from the piles.
Right, because when it comes in, it's, you know, sewage, you know, sludge, it's been dewatered, then it comes in and makes it, put it in the building, each bunker's gotta drain. So, there's any leachate that goes into the drain, and then into the tank, and then the tank will get pumped out, and it gets full and back down to the sewer treatment plant, and then we'll get it back again.
But to, but to add to that, so, the leachate that's coming from the treated sludge is being collected in the collection system underneath the building. Once the time and temperature is met, and the pathogen reduction is ninety, it's ninety-nine percent pathogen-free. By DEP standards, that we can now bring that outside onto the paved curing pad. The curing pads will contain, be graded, so that we can keep as much of the runoff on the pad. Any runoff that, in resulting leachate from it raining on those curing piles, if you look at the site plan, it will either go towards a berm, and then down into the detention pond, which Andrew developed to treat the runoff, which will have leachate, but only from the curing piles. The DEP has a requirement that we have to treat that, because at that point, the concern is nitrates that are, that potential nitrates that are in the curing pad. It's not pathogens, but it is, that material is higher in nitrate. So, that's why the detention pond was designed the way it was, was to treat the nitrate in the curing compost piles.
Is there any chance of leachate coming out of the sludge processing building into that gravel surface?
No.
No. Floor's gonna be pitched.
It's gonna be pitched.
Should that...
I have a question for both of yous. You both have fantastic knowledge of the subject. How long have you been involved in composting and waste management?
Waste management, we've been involved since nineteen ninety-six, when DM&amp;J was created.
Twenty years?
And then, the composting, we've been studying it and learning about it for, I'd say, the last two years.
Two years, yeah, two years.
Before we, you know, wanted to pull the trigger on this.
So, you, this will be the first endeavor with composting?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, it will. And it's, you know, talking about the odor, it's a, it's a, something that we're gonna have to really manage, because if there's major odor complaints, we could get shut down. And we're putting five hundred, some thousand into this project, so I don't want it to be shut down.
I have a question for Mike. The guy says, seen in their operating plan, the fire suppression, I mean, methane gas, I mean, he's to put up hay, or, is, in your eyes, is there a risk here, if one were to get away?
Not with this type, not with this type of product that we can see. And that was one of the things Josh and I have been meeting about this since last year sometime. It's been well over a year.
We started talking about when we did the rezoning.
Yeah, and we talked about it, went back and forth, and we're not really too concerned with the type of product that is being used for composting. Nor are we concerned with the actual sludge building, the thirty-eight by two-hundred-foot building. Basically, it's just concrete walls or whatever, piping, with a roof that if there is a fire for any reason, let's say you have one of the loaders, it's gonna burn that roof off, and it's just gonna melt away.
There's enough containment, because, I mean, it's in a forested setting.
It's all contained, and everything is outside, that we can see. We've got plenty of access, we've made sure that we've got plenty of access. Water supply, we're pretty well set with the water supply concerning fire protection of that area. So, we're really, and basically, the compaction of the area, they're gonna be running equipment on there all the time, so if we need to get fire truck in there...
You could access that.
We could do that as well.
Okay.
I get a concern about the odor nuisance and everything. You have forms, you say, to fill out when somebody complains, and if a neighbor comes by and says, hey, you know, I'm smelling this, and I wanna make a complaint, they fill it out, you send it to the DEP. Is there also any way of sending it to the town, so that we know, to the city here, so that we know that there's a complaint also?
Actually, we're probably gonna get the first call. Probably, but you won't have it in writing.
No, Jim, so what I'm gonna do, so all that John's brought up and what you're bringing is, in my mind, I'm thinking, how can we close this loop a bit tighter? So, I'm gonna be calling in...
Josh. Tracy.
Second time tonight. I'm gonna be calling Tracy and have a discussion, and try to find kind of a system that will be in the lube if they receive a complaint, that they also have to let us know that they've received a complaint, or, you know, but as Dwight said, we probably would be the first one to hear, but regardless of that, I mean, then, and we can also ask that they gave us a summary of how they treated the complaint, and what they did, and what, in timely fashion, and, so just that, they're, you know, if you, they can be more accountable, and then we can be more aware if there's an issue.
How many complaints do we currently receive at the current facility? The city's got none.
But you have to realize, if you go driving through the fire in country, when they're spraying that liquid marijuana, you know, I find that a definitely, there's no doubt about it. I've been to the Lincoln facility many years ago, and there was no odor, and I actually outside purchased that plant guy, and there was no odor. You get more odor from a bag of dehydrated cow dung than you do the compost at Lincoln facility. So...
My question was, the current dump today?
Or the trace station.
Right, I mean, that's pretty stinky, as was stated earlier. Is anyone complaining now about that to the city?
To our facility?
Right.
No.
I think, you know, the most, the worst odor that we used to have was the old wastewater treatment plant. I mean, that was pretty significant. And I think that's also an example of how, you know, we have a new one with, you know, higher technology, and it doesn't smell. I mean, Mike Harris used to enter a room and come to a meeting, and we were all like, okay, we were like, I mean, it was horrible. Now, Mike Harris was there all day, come see, never, ever, ever smelled. Nobody smelled out of that place. Well, no, it wasn't his fault.
Well, they're dewatering it, if it has less, if it has a higher solid content now, it has very, very minimal odors. If you go out and look at the load, it's very minimal.
The point is, if it's well done, it can be really controlled.
And that's why, and that, back to where the current technology comes into play, is it is much more dried out now at the plant, than it's processed than it's used to be. So, it's a very different composition than it used to be now, before it would come to this facility.
Yeah, yeah, oh, yeah.
I don't know if people have seen it, but it looks like little pebbles of fresh dirt. It's not a slurry. Little pebbles of fresh dirt is what it looks like.
It's not really sludge anymore.
You can bring a sample next time, in a jar.
But to answer the odor complaint, too, about the facility, we're, we're the city's closest neighbor to their current transfer station, and the odors are pretty significant. We don't complain about it, we're used to it.
It's accepted use, land use.
Yeah, so, but I think that, and I don't, I'd be curious to hear what the other neighbors that are down the street from the facility, but for us, it's pretty significant odor coming from the city's transfer station.
Do you see by design the city will transfer that material to your facility?
It's an option.
It is definitely an option.
It's an option, but I also wanted to just touch on the odor thing again, is that when there's an odor complaint, and this is part of the operations manual, we have procedures for people, and we have a form here for them to fill out, and then we actually record it. We're gonna record it on a log every time we receive an odor complaint. So, if the city wanted, we could give this to you guys, instead of on a daily basis?
No, no, no.
Maybe on a weekly or monthly basis.
About a quarterly or half a year.
Shallow paperwork.
No, it is, it's, you know, we just wanna make sure you're doing your job. We don't, we don't wanna be here monitoring and trying to police you.
Well, I mean, we could always go on real time.
Come on by.
But, yeah, so we could provide that record monthly or annually.
Yeah, and that could be a request, there could be a note, you know, a request somewhere that requirement that's imposed is that, you know, that they share with us on a, or even if they would share with us on an annual basis before they get their renewal, license renewal. So, that way, we could tie it as, we could put that in the license application form as a requirement, that you'd have to provide this to us. So, that kind of ties it and loops it back, so they would not get a city license, a business license. Do we get, did that, or they don't come to annual?
No, that should be a one.
Yeah, that was a great idea, forget all that. I started looking at John making faces, I'm like, yeah, that's not happening.
But, but just so you know, that we are required to report this to the DEP already, which really is licensing us for the compost facility.
Is there a further question from the board at this point? Does any member of the public wish to comment upon this application?
I think you've probably addressed everything. Oh, my name, Russ Vivier.
Yes.
Five and seven, Industrial Bay. I think you got a letter, I think we addressed most of the issues on there. The only other two I would have is flies, insect flies, and rodents with the seafood waste.
Yeah, that's like I said, as soon as it comes in, it's management, dump it on the pad, mix it.
Yeah.
Get it mixed up, because if you throw, you know, oranges and apples and stuff, and let it just sit there, and, you know, food waste, flies, you know, after it sits there for a day, you're gonna have flies. So, it needs to be mixed up with the carbon source, put in winrows, and covered with a layer of compost. It needs to be managed right.
And if you, if you get a chance to read our application, that's under vector control, the insects and the rodents. But I'm curious if you currently smell the city's transfer station?
I'm not there every day, but I have like four tenants that are there, and I haven't heard any complaints from him, so...
You own the body shop, or your tenants own the body shop, or the...
There's a couple of auto repair shops.
Auto repair, yeah, yeah, okay. Yeah, I think it's far enough down, we probably don't smell it.
Yeah.
The wind kinda goes to the east, the northeast, towards one eighty. Seems like it always blows that way.
I hope not. It's dry, but...
Well, that's, that's the research I had, and that's what it was showing.
Yeah, like towards, yeah, like where Jordan's filling in.
John, can I...
How often do you, oh, excuse me?
Do you feel more comfortable with what you've heard tonight from, before the meeting?
Well, yeah, I think if we can monitor it, if we can depend on the DEP to monitor it, I don't know, twice a year is enough, but I guess if people complain, somebody'll react to it.
Yeah.
I forgot what I was gonna say.
The only, I've been sort of going over your submission, as this has been going on, and seeing what's covered. The property value is not something that we have any say.
Right, right, yeah.
And we have no...
That was just a rant.
Yeah. Yeah, you know, I, you have my sympathy, but it's not something we can base a decision on.
Right, right. That's it.
So, Russ, are you lot thirty-three?
I think it's twelve and thirteen, I think.
Thirty-four.
Five and seven.
He's right here on your site plan?
This is different.
Okay, so, actually, adjacent to the city is Joseph's Holding, and then you own the next two lots.
Right.
So, you're only, you're only, you're only one, well, you're one lot away from the city's transfer station currently.
Right, yeah. And that, and that was a, that was another problem, because I have three drilled wells there, and when they went in and blasted, all my wells went sour, so...
Oh, really?
Yeah.
How was the water before?
It was, it was good. I was like one of the first development, developed properties in there, and the water was good, and then the city went in, put in the transfer station, they did some blasting it. Arilla did a number on the wells. That's it. Thank you.
We've run out of questions.
Yes.
Oh, actually, I do have a couple, just more or less for the record. Your wastewater of both types, is there, the, do you know that the city wastewater plant has the capacity, and do you have an agreement with them for receiving it?
We're actually working on that.
Yes.
We're working on that agreement. There's not going to be a lot of leachate, because the piles in the building are made out of dewatered sludge, and also a shavings wood chip mixture, which is gonna absorb the moisture coming out of those piles. There won't be a lot of leachate, and we're not gonna have any rainwater coming into the building. So, the leachate from the piles will be very minimal. And the bathroom that's in that facility is really for the employees to use that have been in the composting area, and if, for some reason, they fell into the sludge, by DEP and OSHA standards, we oughta have a place for them to wash up. We have another bathroom at our transfer station, which is where the employees will actually use the bathroom. The bathroom down there is really for sanitation purposes.
But if it was used, it's just used by basically one employee, like, D P every day.
How many, I'm sorry, how many employees do you think you'll have?
One.
One?
At the beginning. One's enough.
Well, we currently have, we currently have seventeen, but to run, we have seventeen employees between our Ellsworth facility and our Winterport facility.
Yeah.
But for that compost facility, it will take a half a person.
So, you got to do a composting in Winterport?
No.
No. It'd just be the first time you get into it.
If I may make another question, how often do you anticipate pumping out these storage tanks, and how big are they?
They're fifteen hundred gallons, they're gonna be fifteen to two thousand. And the bathroom one is probably gonna be twice a year. And then the, the one for the compost building, it's gonna be minimal leachate, I'd say probably worth the same, twice a year.
These holding tanks will have like, not like, they will have alarms.
Yeah.
Audible and visible alarms, so...
Seems like you fill up fifteen hundred gallons quickly.
Well, you figure one person using the bathroom, so that's like ten, fifteen gallons a day.
Not the, not the bathroom, the pad.
Oh, the other one?
Yeah.
Well, if you go look at the material down at the wastewater treatment plant, and look at it, it looks like dirt.
Yeah.
I didn't see anything running out of it. And he knows the percentage of the moisture content in it, it's very minimal. Because of the new facility, the way that they can, the screw system, the way it works, is it squeezes and pushes out as much water as possible they can get out of it.
Yeah.
And that's why it's eliminated the odor, because now you don't have, you have, you have less nitrogen in it. And that's where it comes from.
And like I mentioned before, it's being mixed with a carbon source of shaving and wood chip, which is going to be absorbing any of the leachate or moisture coming from the sludge during the decomposition period.
Okay, all right, thanks. And we probably shouldn't use Lincoln as a baseline. I've always called it stinking Lincoln.
Light.
So, are we ready?
Did you close the public hearing, John?
Yes, he was the public hearing.
Okay, perfect. And you do have, if you make a motion, you do, are missing a few items for submission?
Yes. But are we satisfied that this is complete, or do you want me to go down the list?
What, two items, what are two items?
There are some letters.
Oh, okay.
And the D...
And we need to revise the...
The word.
The application to reflect the owner's name.
Yeah.
Yep.
And the maintenance plant should... And the maintenance plan should be on the file.
And the maintenance plan.
You mentioned letters, I think it was like the fire inspector letters that
Yeah.
Just final, finalized, okay.
Yep, which they have been written, yeah.
So do you want me to go to
Mr. Chairman, just before, I do have, I am in receipt of the
Yeah.
The letter from Mike Candy.
I don't know why she didn't get it, I sent it to her thirty-first to make sure.
Well, she did get it.
Yeah.
She just
So we do have it, and you're just looking at submission, you're not looking at, so. I will provide this to the board.
Do, do you want the dramatic reading, the Rust reading, or?
We, we trust you.
It's not you I'm asking, it's the board. It's nice that you trust us. Can we get that into, it is a notarized certificate?
Yep.
Then Michelle can hang it in the office. So are we
I'm, I'm comfortable at this point, John. Hmm? I'm comfortable at this point.
Okay, and noting the items that just need to be, okay?
Yeah.
So is someone prepared to make a motion?
I make a motion that we wrote on preliminary plan for use of a site development titled WMNH Waste. For WM and, um, J Waste, I'm sorry, J Waste. Proposal is to construct compost facility for sludge from wastewater treatment plants and seafood waste. Purpose developed area is about a hundred seventy-three K square feet. Thirteen point one acres of land located off to Mariahville Road, but accessed via the industrial road. Property consists of two parcels, a five acre parcel, which about three acres occupied by the demo debris facility, and eight point one acre vacant parcel. Respectively, tax map fifty slash, I mean dash, slash seventy-five and fifty slash seventy-six in the business park zone. Proposal is to include a total of two hundred point six K square feet of pads in our storage areas, and fifteen point seven five K of square feet composed storage area, and a two hundred forty square feet office building. And there's two exceptions. The application name change?
In the application form.
On the forms.
And two letters, from the state or to the state?
From the state.
From the state, okay.
And maintenance plan.
And a maintenance plan, yeah.
Deed covenant, tag deed covenant.
Pardon?
Tag deed covenant.
Yes. Hearing aid's not working.
And we're finding this is complete
Complete, right.
Okay, is there a second?
I have a second one.
Okay, it's the discussion. All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, very well.
There are
And thank you for coming.
Do you wanna adjourn, and then we can sign the milars?
Well, no, no, we can't adjourn before we sign them. The way I usually do it is that the next item of business is signing of milars. And I would suggest that we make, that we pass a motion that as soon as we have completed signing the milars, that we are adjourned. So
Is that the motion?
I shall make that a motion to adjourn after as soon as the milars are signed. Is there a second?
I second that.
All in favor?
Initial.
Okay.